Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call please.
Bastian.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Parsons.
Here.
Wakefield.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move in a second.
Motion by Parsons, second by Wakefield to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Alright, agenda's approved. Visitors and timed items, we have the opportunity for anyone in the audience, uh, up to five minutes if they have something to address the council. Crickets, we're hearing crickets, okay. Uh, no visitors and timed items at this point, so we'll move on to sewer capital projects work session. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Um, what we've handed out in front of you is kind of a, a list of sanitary sewer projects that we've identified, along with city staff, uh, that, uh, kind of, uh, uh, kind of summarizes kind of what we're anticipating over the next few years, uh, of needs. And so what I was gonna do, uh, each one of these exhibits, most, most each one of the numbers have a corresponding exhibit that goes along with them, and if you'd like, we can pull it up. Otherwise, what I, what I'd like to do is just kind of explain each one of the projects, uh, briefly. Uh, the West Side Trunk Sewer, that won't take a lot of time because I think you guys are aware of most of these. The West Side Trunk Sewer is the project that's planned for next summer, which is the new trunk line that will be running from our new lift station along the railroad tracks, crossing Holly Boulevard, and, uh, will follow, I guess, uh, uh, get the, along the railroad tracks until we get to Main Avenue and then extending down to Aspen. Um, and then at Aspen, uh, we are planning to upgrade the lift station at the pool and, uh, lift that, uh, wastewater so we have a more capacity out of that lift station at the pool so that we are backwash from the water treatment plant as well as the new development that is proposed in that area has, uh, more capacity. So that project is, uh, the bigger one that we're looking at is about 1.36 million. That includes engineering fees, um, associated with that. So each one of these projects, we've included a, a cost estimate of the construction or the overall project cost of each one of them, except one. We have not done an updated cost estimate of the one because we feel it's kind of down the road a little bit yet, but we'll talk about that. The core reconstruction area. Um, if you look at the next map, it's, we have identified the red lines are lines that need to be replaced over time. And we've identified the core area and then the, um, Rushmore area that, in this, in this packet. So the core area is the area between, uh, Main and the high school and from Holly Boulevard south to Aspen. That's kind of what we call the core area, and that has a lot of, uh, clay pipe in it that has sags and tree roots and things like that in it, and over time, we wanted to replace those. So we've identified a project in there over the next, uh, several years and identified a certain dollar amount of approximately $500,000 a year to cover some of those costs.
So does that have to be done in any, uh, particular order with, you know, tied in with the other ones, or are we gonna get into that?
Uh, we can get into that. Um, what we're, what we're doing is, you know, the, we're, we're calling the West Side Trunk Sewer, which is the one we just talked about. It kind of borders the west side of that, so our intention was to move from west to east on those projects of reconstruction. So, so from the west side, so the next project would be the Main Avenue area and Main and, and, uh, going east, first, second, all the way until we get to the high school area and then there's some, uh, sewer lines behind the high school or south of the high school that also need to be upgraded. So what we're anticipating is possibly after this year, maybe one stretch, if you will, one alignment, uh, from Holly south to Aspen. One block or I'll call it one, uh, segment each year thereafter, and that's where the 500,000 comes from. Uh, we kind of identified that in, uh, uh, if you recall in the budget, when we were talking about budget, we're talking about doing a, basically a mill and an overlay, and our intent originally was to start on the opposite side and work our way towards the middle because that mill and overlay is simply a Band-Aid to get us by 10 years because we anticipate this to hap, to take place over several years. And so if you can see each one of those lines, you know, you're looking at at least eight or 10 years before we get to the south side of the high school. Make sense?
Yeah, well, from a staging standpoint, how, how difficult would, how difficult would it be if we doubled up each year and we did two?
I think it's gonna come down to your funding. I think a bigger portion of that, I guess, would I would say. Ideally, you know, you know, we've talked about this in the past, do you pay cash or do you borrow money? I think we were planning on even borrowing this each year. Uh, but if you wanted to bite off a bigger chunk, you certainly could do that, you just have to borrow. We're gonna end up borrowing that money, I think, to pay that down over time. And that's certainly a way to look at it. I know on the Sylvan Circle area, we looked at doing that, and every other year, we were doing a project and just trying to pay cash out of those and that, we really depleted our fund. I mean, our sewer fund is pretty depleted now. Uh, we also paid for some of our street surfacing be cut, with that, it helped pay for that, but, uh, I think going forward, I think we need to look at, and Brian and I, this is really Brian's idea, is to pay for our sewer from the sewer fund, our water from the water fund, and then possibly sales tax to cover some of the street surfacing improvements. Do you agree with that, Brian? So. So that kind of summarized, so if you wanted to look at that core area, I would say from Split Rock Boulevard to Ellis and Eastern Railroad, from Holly to Aspen, over the next 10 years, I, we were anticipating half a million dollars a year for, for that duration to cover the cost of those projects. Okay? So that's the core reconstruction area. Rushmore area, sanitary sewer. As you guys know, we, uh, started out with a Sylvan and Teton, uh, project. We tried to bid it this summer, the bids come in, uh, a little over our estimate due to the bidding environment and the time of year, basically. And so we're gonna finish up the Sylvan Circle area, what you see in red, uh, this next summer. Uh, and that's, uh, estimated at approximately, um, $270,000 worth of sewer costs next year. And then, uh, what we've estimated, if you look at the description, uh, uh, on the top of the second page there, it says project estimate, estimate to sewer fund, future phases, meaning each year of another 300,000 a year to cover the core area, or not the core area, I'm sorry, the Rushmore area sewer improvements. And that would, uh, cover a similar size to what you see in red here. A similar size of project on the Rushmore. And the Rushmore, just so, uh, I should have probably give you a better map, but if you flip back to the previous page, uh, the Rushmore area is really basically from, um, it's actually from, as you can see where, uh, Holly Boulevard is there, Split Rock East, a lot of that red that you see over to Split Rock Creek, a lot of that red's already completed because it was part of the Sylvan Circle area, but about half of it has not been completed. So you're gonna, we're gonna see the rest of that, uh, Rushmore area, um, taken care of as part of that 300,000 a year for the next several years.
So John, when you say several years, three, four, five?
At least five years. So we'll have the next year at 270 and then 300,000 a year for the next five, so about six more years.
And then, John, those would overlap, uh, so the core part of town at 500K a year and then the Rushmore area at 300K a year, so you're looking at about 800K a year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. So then, uh, we move on to the next project. We have been identified as that force main extension to Sioux Falls. Uh, that's something, uh, if you guys will recall, when we built our lift station, we built it, uh, the footprint of the building is large enough that we can expand that, uh, to add another force main and more pumps within that lift station so we can increase the capacity, um, uh, for our future growth. And that estimate at this point is about three and a half million dollars. And that force main, you can see an exhibit there, would parallel our existing force main uh, that currently runs from, uh, the lift station, the new lift station, uh, along Holly Boulevard, and then we cross country, so to speak, until we get to the Sioux Falls wastewater treatment facility. And what we would do, uh, is we would basically have two lines then, side by side, it'll provide us some redundancy. Uh, but the intention was, uh, when we built the lift station, within seven years, we needed that, and based on our growth rates, that's still on track, so about five years from now, we need to have that other force main. Um, and, cause otherwise, we're gonna start seeing ourselves running out of capacity with the pumps and the, and the, uh, force main, so we're gonna be exceeding some of the limitations on that, so, uh, probably can get by because we've got our EQ basin, so we can use our EQ basin to some degree, but, uh, it's our recommendation to get that redundancy in there as soon as possible, within the next five years, I should say.
And the one thing just to remember is, is we did already put the casing underneath Highway 100 so that, it's a lot easier for us to get that underneath there, so we won't impact the highway. Uh, when we go to do that, we'll just be able to push it through, so. And then Raleigh, sizing wise, or, I can't remember, is it a 16 now that we run all the way there, or 12? 12 now.
It's 12 currently, and we haven't sized the new one.
We have not.
It depends on what our population will be at that point, but, uh, you know, at least a 16, if not an 18 inch force main, the second one.
Yep.
And we put a large enough casing in that we can, we can go to about any, so we put a, a, a large casing in underneath the South Dakota 100. Um, if I could add also, just so you guys know, we were shut down on Friday to get our reconnection back up. Uh, it took them, uh, they had a lot of issues with that reconnection, just to give you an update on that, that force main recons, realignment project. Uh, DOT South Dakota 100 there, it took them till about 10:30 to get us back connected, and then another few more hours, uh, till about 1:30, 1 o'clock at night before they had it all backfilled and we could start running it again. So, uh, took them a little longer than they originally anticipated, but we got it back up and connected. Uh, we've got good, uh, ASBIL locations of that, um, uh, but back up and running, just so you guys know that, so. No, that, I, I, I kind of shifted gears on you. As you know, South Dakota 100, we had to realign our force main, and a part of that realignment, we had to shut our main down for a cer, certain period of time, that was last Friday. And so that took, they thought they would be done in the afternoon. It took till 10:30 to get it reconnected at night, and then about 1:00 in the morning when they got it done. And they were still working on the City of Sioux Falls one the next Saturday, on Saturday, so.
So we use our basin?
Yeah, our EQ basin, yep, yep, we have to use our EQ basin when we got, that's why we got it, you know, that's what that's there for. Um, and then going forward, we've got, now that we've got the force main reconnected, we've got, in a sense, two EQ basins. City of Sioux Falls has a big 3 million gallon tank on the lower end of their, uh, treatment plant that we can use as well, but, um, you know, we had to use this one in this case because we were cut, are cutting our force main. I didn't mean to get sidetracked there on you. I kind of shifted gears on you. But this force main, as you can see there, is just the redundancy, uh, and, um, the, the idea was, um, the lift station footprint inside that is large enough so that we just have to add additional pumps in there, two additional pumps.
So just a quick question on the, what kind of time does that buy us, and what's the projection? Once we have the second one in there, how many more years does it buy, Brandon?
At least 20 years is what our intention would be, at least 20 years on that lift station and force main. Um, likely, it depends on what size we would make that force main, it may get us, uh, more years than that. So it kind of depends on how we want to approach that. Uh, you know, ideally, you go a minimum of 20 years, ideally, you go more than that. Uh, our existing force main obviously has gotten us nearly 30 years already, uh, but we don't have any redundancy within that, and we need some redundancy on that. And in the past, we've always had our lagoons, and right now, we still have our EQ basin, so we've got some, some, uh, you know, redundancy built in so in case we have a break, we can always shut things down, go to our EQ basin and then fix and repair and then start the pumps back up, so.
So with that EQ basin, um, I'm assuming it wasn't in there long enough to have any older issues?
No, I don't, Monday you just felt it today. Did anybody smell it?
Well, we're out from 8:00 AM till 1:00 PM Saturday afternoon, actually.
Saturday until we got them up and in?
Because they didn't get the concrete for it for the thrusting. Yes, we did pump into the EQ basin, no, there is still water in the EQ basin, but we're drawing it back in slowly now, so.
Is there?
It's a week probably, we're better to get it all in there.
How, how is, have you guys smelled anything?
No, I walk by the park all the time, my dick.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you got, if it was sitting in there a long period of time, we'd probably, may start smelling it, but I doubt that you will.
So Raleigh, so say at some point, we're able to build you a building out there. It's gonna be right by that basin, is that gonna be, uh, is that gonna be a health issue, anything like that, if we put a building, site a building out there?
I don't think so. Not at all.
I think it's gonna take more time for that to, for the solids to settle out of there, and you've already got a, a wet well where it's settling out in there too, so I don't think you're gonna be pumping as many solids out into that pond which created, I believe, more of the smell from the, the old ponds, so.
I don't think you'll have any odor, as long as we get that waste out of there in the next few days, that'll be, shouldn't be a problem. Okay? East Side Trunk Sewer, there's a couple of those, and we've identified them as two projects here, two separate one. Uh, as you know, the Bethany Meadows, uh, TB and J have come forward and asked you in a, in a letter to extend a sanitary sewer, um, through their property. Uh, since it crosses some other, uh, property owner's property there, uh, the TB and J have asked you to, uh, do a preliminary design and, and possibly install that trunk line on the east side. Now this exhibit, it illustrates a trunk line that goes all the way past the interstate. I don't anticipate us doing that necessarily right away, do you, Brian? I would say we would just get up to the south edge of the interstate so that everything south of the interstate could be developed. You see that area north of the interstate, in the future, would be serviced by this line, though, so keep that in mind as well. So, uh, but, you know, the, the interstate's a, a heck of a barrier, and it would take a long time for that to, uh, the need to be there, and so I would, uh, think we would just simply be looking at that red line from the interstate south to where it's extended at this point. And so at this point, what we've identified is, I just showed you that overall basin. Uh, we're coming forward with a plan, uh, preliminary design agreement to start looking at this a little closer uh, so that we can get a better idea of where we would run that alignment. At this point, this is just a line on an aerial image, we have to get a little more detail for TB and J. But we've estimated this, uh, project cost of about, how much? 900, 925,000. Now that was just an estimate, um, without looking at more detail, that's our high level, and that'd be from the interstate south to, um, kind of on the backside of, the east side of John Berkman's farm is about where that sewer's extended to right now.
So, um, Chuck, do you want to address what the construction group has said about that, or?
Well, what they were.
Put your mic on.
What they're looking for from the city is for us to give more direction, which this, from what I've heard tonight, Barb, ties into that, so.
I'm sorry, what was that?
And I think we've talked to Brian too about how we can recover some of those costs possibly in the future. We just have to be the bank up front, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think this is an important place to go to keep that development going on the east side. It also might impact, um, being able to get the next elementary school on the east side rather than going over to 41st Street.
Right. I, I guess, I apologize, I see I've got those two flip-flopped on my maps. Um, but the Bethany Meadows one is the TB and J, which is line item number six on our items here. Uh, that is a TB and J request, if you will. Uh, and it's not just for their land, it's, uh, for the school's property there, and it's also for, uh, I think, um, Tony owns some land over there as well, so it services that entire area.
So the map that shows the line going up to interstate, 900,000?
Uh, from the interstate south, yeah, about 900,000, yep.
Okay.
Approximately 900. Um, that will be updated as we go through the preliminary design, though.
There was some talk about, um, once we get that trunk sewer line, that's a place that we could put a trail from the park board standpoint, so it can all kind of tie together.
Couple of things to realize about a trunk line, we always need a path adjacent to that anyway for our trucks to service. So, uh, we always try to develop a, uh, crushed concrete trail adjacent to that, uh, that sewer alignment so that we can get in there and jet and clean out that sewer as needed. So that's a requirement anyway, so it's a good, uh, paired use, if you will, uh, if you want to just piggyback on top of that, uh, that trail with, uh, some asphalt for a bike trail. Okay? Then number five, I apologize for that. If you look at the east side trunk sewer, and we're gonna, we need to rename these, cause we've, we got two east side trunk sewers, but, uh... Okay, we will. Well, maybe you want to come up with something. The big, this is the big one that's, all this really does, um, what this kind of does, guys, is this opens up some development south of Aspen Boulevard, uh, on the east side. So if you could imagine, kind of south of the funeral home out there at Chestnut and Aspen, on that south side, what this trunk line does is open up that area south, but it also will eliminate several lift stations. So you can see all those dots that we've got on there, French Creek, Industrial, Pioneer, uh, Golf Course Lift Station, Rushmore Lift Station, and then even the Bethany Meadows Lift Station. What this trunk line does is actually goes up along, uh, Split Rock Creek and eliminates the need for all those lift stations, so it'll consolidate them all into one larger lift station at the south end of that east side. And so as you can see, a proposed lift station on the south side, but that is, is really, uh, just that. It eliminates several lift stations and consolidates them into one. And that should be a long-term plan, that's in our facilities plan of something we needed to do, but that's a very costly project uh, and one that we likely have to do in phases. So I would admit, I would anticipate, uh, you know, the lift station, force main, and then collection of those, uh, so we could eliminate the golf course lift station, the Rushmore Lift Station, the Wyans Lift Station, uh, initially, and then in the future, we would do future extensions up there. I think, uh, a big portion of this is gonna be funded by the city's sewer fund. It's not gonna be recovered by many people because most of these people are already, uh, uh, covered with sewer. There is a fair amount of area that will be covered, that will be future development, which would be, um, north of, um, Redwood Boulevard and east of the creek. So up where our new water tower is going, that area will be serviced, so there's probably 80 acres up in there that'll be able to be serviced, that will be able to get some cost recovery on. So keep that in mind, this project is probably a project that'll, that'll come, uh, primarily out of our sewer fund, um, but, uh, once we get clear to the north end, we'll be able to start recovering a portion of that. Um, I wanted to go back, uh, and talk about the other east side. That east side sanitary basin that TB and J have requested would be a recovered project. So we would front the cost, but then try to recover those costs over time as the developers develop. Um, so it's important to keep that in mind, however, um, we haven't identified or haven't shown any recovery coming into the sewer fund. So when we start looking at our rates, keep that in mind, we haven't included any recovery dollars coming in. We've only identified the expenses at this point. Because they come in so slow, you can't, uh, count on that necessarily, unless you assess it right away.
So where, where in these projects, is it like when we have to go under the bridge and we have to be down so deep and all of that?
This one.
Which project is that?
This one. This one, the east side, I'll call it the trunk sewer that eliminates all the lift station, that's the tough one. Um, we're gonna, I shouldn't say tough, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough to swallow from a cost standpoint, but then not only that, um, it's gonna go through the golf course, and so we gotta minimize the impact of the golf course as well. Um, two golf courses, ours and, uh, the, the par three course to the north of us, so there's... On Rushmore. And we, a, a portion of our, um, our water line was exposed, um, on that too, but that isn't part of this, but. Anyway, I didn't mean to get sidetracked, but there, that project is, is substantial, that's about a 13, 11.9 million, um, and, and, and climbing. As that estimate originally was about 10 million, but, uh, we've been about four years past since we've estimated that the last time.
Is this one, if it goes through the golf course, Brian, that we could eliminate some of that problem with the restroom?
Yeah, this, this would go through the golf course, we could take a look at, uh, you know, we'd start getting the restroom about the same time.
Yeah, you mean on the lower end there?
Down the course.
Yeah, and we wouldn't have no, it would be, it'd be gravity sewer then, instead of a lift station. Okay?
So on this, um, you know, with the cost recoveries, that's that map, I think, uh, we've talked about in the past. Uh, Sioux Falls does cost recoveries for developments, so, uh, as long as we're ahead of it, I think that's the key there. Um, you know, from that standpoint. And then when we're looking at, um, the map, it looks like we're going down the railroad track again. Is there anything that we should be doing while we're already digging that up?
We've left those, uh, area for that, that's gonna be a force main, um, that'll be on the other side of the tracks. We're, we're kind of occupying the east side right now of the railroad tracks with the gravity sewer. That gravity sewer's different than this force main. Uh, the gravity sewer currently, uh, takes pretty much all the east side of town and, and the core part of town in that gravity sewer. And this force main, uh, lift station, uh, would, would extend all the way to our big lift station at the treatment plant, where our old treatment plant used to be, and then we'll pump everything to Sioux Falls. It's either that, or we'll pump it all the way to Sioux Falls with us. So if you, if you piggyback phase one, at the same time we were doing the force main to Sioux Falls, we may simply tie that in to the main to Sioux Falls. So we'd have two mains, some redundancy there, but then we'd also have a force main that would go all the way to Sioux Falls from the southeast lift station.
Who owns that land across to the south of Bethany? Do we know whose land that is?
Uh, hold on a second.
I mean, has there been any talk about development over on that side? I haven't heard anything, but.
It's, um...
But eventually.
He's, he, he has no intention of that.
Uh, Dolly. Uh, Beverly Nelson, Lee Trust. You got multiple owners, you got Bad Dolly, you got Shures.
Shears.
Shears?
Uh, John and, uh, John Shears.
So.
I'm, and at this point, we don't have any pressure there. If you guys recall, Gene Johnson owned, uh, an 80 that is just where our, our exit, well, 7 is located. Gene owns an 80 there, well, his, his air, uh, Lind, uh, Diane does now, but owns an 80 there, and he was pushing us a little bit once... And he was pushing us a little bit once upon a time to get something opened up on that east side, but I haven't heard anything for a few years now. And where that lift station goes in the future, you know, the longer we wait, the farther south that'll go. Right now, we show it kind of at the south end of McCarty Park. But reality is, we'll push that as far south as we can when we do that project because the farther south we go, the more we open up south of Aspen. Okay? Lift station rehab, we don't have a map for this. What we really wanted to just identify on there is Raleigh needs some money just systematically to rehab our existing lift stations. And I think this year, your budget is $58,000 going forward. We've, we would like to have more than that. I think we've identified $100,000 going forward per year. And that's needed just for rehab, pump replacements, control replacements occasionally. We have lightning strikes that cause problems, so that 100,000 a year is, really is a minimum. So giving a little money for maintenance there is pretty important for those existing lift stations. Yes, it does. Yep. Comprehensive sanitary sewer update, depending on when you, you know, feel the need that we need some updates to that, that's something every five to seven years, you need to keep that up to speed. However, if we haven't completed all of our sewer projects on our current study, you know, unless there's demands other places, I wouldn't necessarily do an update until you are, have expended all the funds for the previous study. And right now, we've got a fair amount of work. Basically, everything above that is identified in the original study that's currently on the books. More recently, we talked about, in this one, we don't have an estimate. Ristie, I call it Ristie property. We'll get more creative if you want us to, Barb. That'd be, that would be a developer-driven. We had, originally, Tom Odie had had plans of doing some development on the north side of Holly Boulevard, that's that last exhibit that you see there. And that's where this sewer, that green alignment went. There's actually a preliminary plan or a sketch plan that was already submitted that this trunk line kind of crossed through their development plan. And then followed that railroad tracks west to Sandstone, kind of north of Sioux Valley Energy, which would serve that area. So this trunk line would tie into an existing lift station that's located on the west side of the Big Sioux River and south of Holly. You kind of see it on the bottom of the page there, or on the right-hand side of the page. That's just west of the Big Sioux River. And that lift station's there already, that services the bluffs and everything over here at this point. This would be simply another trunk line that would go up there. We have not done an estimate on that. This is another developer-driven one. This would be one that you would recover the costs on. And I guess that's all we had at this point on projects identified. If you had, did I miss any, Brian, that we talked about? I think those are all the ones that we had talked about. So I don't know if there's anything else that you guys have in mind. I think that's more than we have funds for, obviously. So we have to prioritize and.
Which ones are we committed to at the moment? The west side trunk sewer?
Yep, I would say. Well, you can pull the plug on any project if you want. You've done design on the west side trunk sewer, the core reconstruction, we haven't done anything on that one. Rushmore area, that one's planned for next year, so one and three are so-called committed, I would say. And number two, that core reconstruction, if you look back at the description, that is going to be the, you know, the project that'll be in 2020. So that was planned for 2020. Yes, that's right. But, and then number four, your force main extension, that's, you know, that's needed within five years. That's our plan. Now, if the east side trunk sewer, the Bethany Meadows one, has a priority because of developers, I could anticipate that one happening sooner than your lift station to Sioux Falls. Or your force main to Sioux Falls. I could see that number six on our, the Bethany Meadows east side sewer happening before we do anything with the second force main to Sioux Falls. This was really kind of our priority, if you will, with one or two of them flip-flopping.
So I think, I think we need to do that force, that Bethany Meadows thing, but I'm still trying to think about how we could move up the reconstruction of some of the roads, whether they're in Sylvan Circle or the core, by using, do you use sewer money for the underground stuff? But then the road stuff's got to come out of sales tax. And maybe if our cash reserves build up, doubling up there at some points to try to get ahead of the games. And rather than waiting every year, I'd like to do two a year if we could, you know, I don't know if we can swing.
Wasn't there an issue with like parking though for, for like some seniors that are in the core area?
The issue with doing like main and first, or second, third, third or fourth and fifth, is you get too big of a construction area. We can do it, don't get me wrong, from a, from a construction engineering, it's, it's easy to do. Just from a public perception standpoint, we get enough pushback now when people have to walk through their backyard neighbor, but if we push them out another block.
Well, and that's why I asked about phasing, so.
You could phase it though.
Well, but we could phase, we could do some in Sylvan and some in the core.
We'll, we'll.
And try to do it that way.
You're doing that.
Sylvan Circle will be done in 2019. Then we're going to move down Rushmore into the Yellowstone, North Oak, or South Oak Ridge area. So we will do those at the same time. Yep, we'll do, we'll start the core area moving west, or moving east will be one project. And then the Rushmore area will be a second project. So we'll be doing two, that's the plan anyways, do two core part or older part of towns projects each year.
So we do, in a sense, a neighborhood project on the east side and a neighborhood project in the core at the same summer. But I didn't know if you were talking about doubling each one of those up.
So when it comes to projects like this and you're working in a core part of town, one thing to keep in mind is, what you do is you do a staggered start. So if you're working on two roads next to each other, what you do is you give one a head start at two blocks. And then, then, once they hit the second block, they're starting to backfill, then you start the next one over two blocks behind. And you just work yourself through. And then that way, what you do is you have less impact on how far they have to walk. We've got some interesting things with streets not fully connecting, but overall, I could see us navigating that pretty well, especially with some of the dialogues that I've had with contractors and what they can do for temporary road gravel and stuff like that as they're going through. So I guess I would not be opposed at all to trying to do two streets. It's just, the start time has got to be delayed by, you can call it weeks or blocks, however you want to do it. But, you know, I've seen contracts written both ways where basically you say, you can't start this street until you make it at least two blocks on the next street, or, you know, whatever. But that way, you kind of wave through and you have less impact on the residents.
I'll be honest with you guys, you know, you guys could, you could do the whole area in two years if you're, one to two years if you wanted to. We're doing a neighborhood reconstruction project right now in Sioux Falls, it's $10 million. So if you can imagine, this is, these are million dollar projects. We're doing 10 million in one year. So it can be done if you want to bite off more and pay for it over time. So it's just a phasing, like Tim was saying, it's just a matter of phasing. You got to start ones, just like he was saying, stagger them so that you got the least amount of impact to the residents. But that, it's a big impact to those folks right now.
But, yeah, it is, but I'd like to, I'd like to push as hard as we can to get them done because we're just going to have other stuff coming up, so.
So when I look at the map and kind of what the capabilities are, you know, and especially with, when you're getting into these bigger dollar value projects, you're getting into different construction firms, so their speed of laying pipe can be a little bit different. And that's probably what John's kind of alluding to. So for us to look at the core part of town, just as an example, realistically, you could draw this into three spots, if you will. So basically, everything to the, to the south of Brandon Elementary Track and west would be one year. Then you'd have the core part, which would be between the two tracks, if you will, would be a second year. And then the third year would be everything else that would go to Split Rock. Now, that's pretty aggressive, but it's definitely achievable when you're starting to get into those dollar values and the contractors that you're going to bring into town for that. It's just, it's a completely different scope. And as you do that, what it would do is it would save us quite a bit of money on mobilization cost just because you're not going to have contractors coming every year. And we're already looking at borrowing this money. So realistically, the cost, I mean, you're, you're going to see that change a little bit as well. So if we could save some money by that, and then construction admin gets a lot easier when you're working on a big area like that, because we can really focus on it.
You know, if we, if we get really aggressive on this, then the question becomes, you know, we talked about covering up fourth, you know, that, for a short period of time, you know, six years. If we could get to fourth before six years, then the question is, is it worth doing it?
It wouldn't be then. If you think you're going to do this, you know, if you were to do this in three years, let's say, the core part of town, it wouldn't be worth doing that mill and overlay that we were talking about on the east side on fourth. It would not be worth it, because that'd be a waste of money. If you're looking at, if you're looking at this core part of town in three or, you know, three years, let's say, or four, it looks like I could break that out into three, probably four phases on what's remaining there. Pretty easy, or, you know, two, but I think that'd become pretty aggressive. But we could, if you want us to look at that, what might make sense, we could look at what might make sense that way. And then look at it from a larger project standpoint. It's your call.
Well, we can borrow the, the sales tax money, but I, and we'd have to borrow on the sewer fund too. We're not going to be able to cover all of that.
We'd have, we'd have to take a look.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. We'd have to, maybe what we could do now is now that we know kind of your, you know, your desire, we can look at what's feasible.
Well, that's just Tim and I, nobody else is saying anything, so I don't know what to do.
Right. You know, we could, what I'd probably do is go back and, you know, the cost comparison is pretty similar to the smaller projects that we've been doing in Brandon. We've got a pretty good dial-in on those. What we'd probably do is do a cost comparison to that, to the cost per foot of the projects we're doing in Sioux Falls right now, that larger one, and try to get an idea, is it a 20% savings, is it a 15% savings? Probably won't be too much more than that though, if anything. At 10 to 15, I would say, is what you'd save on the mold. And, and time, I mean, time is big too. I mean, if you guys think about it, three years from now, you know, that's another 10% just because of time of construction, you know, delaying that project out three years. So 10 years is quite a bit more, at 3% rate increase per year, you know.
I guess Barb's insist, the first I've seen all of this, I'm, I'm in agreement with that core construction. If we can accelerate that, then I want some input from Brian on what it's going to do to impact us financially. And then as I look at all this, I'd want some input from Tammy on, is this our five to 10-year, say, plan for doing projects around the town and stuff? So I want some more staff input.
I agree 100% with that Chuck, I think it's a good plan to go with that and see what we could do, from a staff standpoint of understanding financial impacts. You know, when you're taking it to that big of a scope, it may even change how some of the flows are if you're looking at making that core wipeout area there. Tammy may want to change some of the flow characteristics to make it easier. And then the other thing is, is when we're looking at doing a force main coming up the railroad track, that may have some impacts too. So, I mean, there's a lot going on and Tammy's got even more homework to do, so. You're welcome.
We have some time, but, you know, we have, we know what's identified for next year.
I think what we got, next year's, I mean, this comes back to guys, your capital plan. And Brian, and, you know, we've talked about this and Tammy about, you know, it's something you need to do as a capital plan to actually have a five-year plan in place. We're, we do a project and try to estimate the first, next couple of years. But, you know, it really comes down to your budget time is when we plan for next year. And that's what we end up doing. And that's even if you have a five-year plan, you'll still do that to some degree. But at least if you had a five-year capital plan, you might find that helpful because you've got a lot of your priority projects listed in that book that you can say, well, this one needs to get done at some point. And you can move it up in the timeline or move it back, depends on how you want it, so. Five-year plan will be good.
Okay, so how do we, how do we proceed then?
I think you, I mean, I think you should look at our, you know, our priority list and your, and then come back at the next meeting or something, Brian. I don't know what your thoughts were, Brian, but maybe in the next, at the next planning meeting, prioritize. We'll have it set up so that we can take these projects and implement them in whatever year you want in your, your rates, to see how it affects your rates. That's the important thing, I guess. Next, the next thing we're going to talk about is the rates that this, these projects affect.
Yeah, you could ask which ones we've committed to. We've got the core reconstruction, the west side trunk, the Rushmore. Those are, those are going to be ongoing ones, the force main extension to Sioux Falls, that's going to, that's going to be driven at some point in time in the next five years. The east side trunk, you know, the big one. I'll be honest with you, I don't know where that's fitting in. I mean, it's 12 million bucks. No, he needs the other one, he needs the Bethany Meadows one. And we could even phase that if we wanted to. You know, that's $925,000 up to the interstate. So we could cut it at Redwood.
Yeah, yeah.
For a little bit of cost savings.
I'm not so concerned about the other one then, I'm only concerned about the one that's going to open up that development out there, so we don't stymie that development.
That'd be the Bethany Meadows one, that's the lower cost one.
I like that price a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
So easements, that kind of thing, where are we at on some of these projects? Because I mean, that can be something that takes a lot of time. You know, are we working with the property owners already? Do we know where we're at? You know, is there existing easements that are already cleared up and ready to go?
The, I don't know if you want to add to that. The west side trunk sewer, there's still some construction easements to acquire there, as well as the Casey's easement. I think Lisa's been working on that one. There's actually two of them that are kind of difficult ones that Lisa has been working on. I haven't touched base with her recently, it's probably been a month since I've talked to her about that, to see where she's at, unless she's shared something with you, Tammy.
Yeah, I talked to her about it a little bit. I think I'm going to make a trip down to Des Moines and go talk to Casey's face-to-face, see if we can get somewhere with that. There's like, there's quite a few other easements that need to be signed yet.
Probably 20-some construction easements in need yet.
And then if you're looking at the, you know, the force main extension, we haven't had any discussions with Risties. The rest of that would primarily be through existing easements and the road right of way. If you're looking at the east side Bethany Meadows one, I'm not anticipating a lot of issues up to at least Redwood because the property on both sides of that is owned by TB and J and Tony Bosch.
Well, I would vote for the east side trunk, the Bethany's, before the force main extension to Sioux Falls personally.
Yeah, the force main extension to Sioux Falls, at some point in time, we're not going to have a choice.
Yeah.
We'll need to, you know, when we hit some targets.
We've got triggers built into that, so.
Yep, we'll need to be under design with, with construction to take place. You know, the, the big one, the east side big trunk, we haven't talked to anybody about any easements there. Um, you know, the, the, the big one, the east side big trunk, um, we haven't talked to anybody about any easements there.
Right.
And what's gonna trigger that? What's gonna need to...
To trigger that?
I would say that, um, what would trigger that more than anything would be the need for opening up developments south of Aspen. Wouldn't you agree, Brian? So it's probably developer-driven. I mean, if we've got developers that are, if we got room to go on this Bethany extension, that's probably gets your first-time homebuyer and mid-homebuyer, uh, covered for town. And that's something we don't have right now.
I think this gets back into what those developers are talking about in that committee, is they want us to decide more of this and then reach out to them and go, this is what we're thinking. We're gonna recover these costs, things like that, instead of waiting for them.
Right. But if we do the, uh, the Bethany Meadows, that opens that part up, I haven't heard anybody talking about any land to the south, but we can certainly ask them.
That would be, yeah, that would be Diane, I think, or, um...
Dolly's.
Yeah, Dolly's and Ty Doll.
Majority of it.
Ty Doll and...
JF Ventures owns about forty acres south of the railroad tracks where we built the well number seven. They own property in there, and that's the only one I'd ever talk to about any, any development issues or, or possible.
I've talked to Shears in the past, and they had no intentions about, they're farmers. Uh, but that doesn't mean that, uh, somebody might not buy that at some point, and then it, but they, that's not serviceable right now, so. They would have to have a sewer line to make that service.
Can we jump back to that west side trunk sewer, just 'cause I'm new to all of this? If you can't get an easement from Casey's, then what?
We have an existing easement with Casey's. It doesn't meet our, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't meet our design criteria for easement width. 'Cause it's, it's based upon depth of the pipe, and we wanna go deeper, so give it a wider easement up at the top. So, I mean, if we needed to, we could squeeze it in there.
We can. You certainly can squeeze it in there.
It's very, very tight.
We're getting, you know, we're about five feet deeper there, and it's sandy soils, so keep that in mind. I mean, so, I mean, our contractors complain already, because we end up with these wide trenches, uh, just because of the sandy soils. If it was clay, more clays in that area is a little better, uh, 'cause you can have vertical walls and pull a trench box. But in sandy soils, you really can't do that, so we find ourselves outside of our easement, is what we'll end up doing.
Then what?
You just, you have Casey's probably s- come back on us, because we've encroached in their property.
And the, the other thing is that current easement with Casey's, if I remember correctly, it is right up to what would be the northwest corner of their building. I mean, it's within...
Yeah.
A, a few, a couple of feet.
Yeah, it's...
So we were looking at making it wider to the west, moving the, the main to the west. If we're, if we need to dig in the same one, uh...
It's just not...
The contractor's gonna have to do some, uh, measures to ensure that Casey's doesn't fall in the hole. Let's put it that way.
Well, they, what they would do is they would encroach on the railroad side, is where we would encroach. 'Cause we've actually pushed it west and south anyway, so what would ha- see, they've got property on both sides of our easement. And they feel that even the property west of the easement next to the railroad is pretty valuable to them. And that's where the real issue's coming in. We've asked to actually just take purchased property to the west of that, that's in, in, in all practical purposes, unusable for them. 'Cause it's between the railroad tracks and our permanent easement that we already have, and we were just trying to encroach into that area, not between the existing easement and their building. We were just trying to go from there to the west, and they, it's really, I don't know if it, they just, I think they understand everything. Um, it probably wouldn't hurt to be a face-to-face.
Casey's is an unusual, I shouldn't say unusual corp- it's a corporation.
I just wanna see them hold up our project.
You know, the other, the other option we've talked about, which would be much more expensive, we could come east, down Holly, and then south down Sioux, and just skip that whole railroad property in there. It becomes much more expensive, 'cause now we're tearing up Holly and, well, Holly's gonna get torn up anyway, but we'd be tearing up Sioux.
Yeah, it'd be a, it'd be a significant increase in cost.
We haven't. We, we certainly could. I don't think it would. It'd be a pretty easy one to do.
Just, yeah.
So, if we taken... Sorry, sorry. So if we, if we're moving it to the west, is that our eastmost line that's close to their building, we could move that to the west, right? So, sales pitch, tell them they could expand their building on the west side if they ever need to, if they make this change. 'Cause that's gonna be the thing that's on their mind the most, is if they could ever expand their building, so handle it that way, and hopefully that gets us a bonus. Make sense?
Uh, they really wouldn't be able to expand their building, 'cause the easement width that we're talking about is about forty feet, isn't it?
Yeah.
And they're about forty-two feet from the edge of their building to the railroad right-of-way. So, we're looking at, at land that they wouldn't use or can't use currently, but they would not gain anything that they could actually add on to it.
If we buy it from them, they'd make some money on it.
We've approached that, too.
Are we willing to buy it from them? I don't know. I don't know how you do things.
I think we were. I think Lisa was approaching it that way. I'll be honest with you. I think Lisa has approached it that. I just don't think they wanna sell anything.
They haven't, I don't think they've reached out to Lisa for a while. The last conversation I had with her was a week or so ago.
Okay.
I don't think there's been much movement from Casey's, just they haven't responded to her. So, if we can't agree on a price, you know, if, if we wanna buy an easement, um, then we could certainly look at condemnation.
I think what I would do suggest is you have Lisa come back and give you an update, or Tammy an update, that she can update you guys. Because I think if you had a timeline, even with condemnation, takes a little time, uh, but once you have started that process, you can go in and do the work, and then the court settle the case later. But it still takes time to get to that point. So I think Lisa needs to weigh in on that. She's been working on those easements, but...
How significantly does the price change if you go over and down on Sioux?
I don't remember if we actually did an estimate. It's significant, though. I mean, it would be, uh, I'm, I'm...
We, we'd basically tear up half of Sioux.
Yeah.
From Holly south to the railroad tracks.
And it, well, it would, I hate to, give me, uh, I mean, give me some more time to do this, but you're three to four, four hundred thousand dollars real fast. And it would impact Casey's a lot more, so that's what we've tried to tell them, that, you know, if we have to go around our right-of-way, I mean, that's, we, we've been down this road of, you know, buying it, saying, you know, explaining that, you know, it's, it's la- it's not really an impact to you, but it, it really didn't go anywhere with them, so. 'Cause, 'cause we've talked about going down the right-of-way, which would impact two driveways of theirs, access in and out of their property, which would be a huge impact, but, anyway.
And I think maybe in the past, we maybe weren't as convinced that we needed to do this, but I think we're pretty convinced that we need to proceed with this trunk sewer main. And so, we're, we're gonna do it, so they better, either they need to cooperate, or I guess we go to Plan B. I'm not sure what that is, but...
Plan B is wait until you have it, so.
And do, do I understand this, or this impacts Justin's property, too?
Yep. Well, this, this impacts a number of things. It impacts the water treatment plant, it impacts the pool, it impacts Justin Oakland's development. 'Cause that pipe right now currently is running about seventy, eighty percent full coming down main. Um, so we'd be fairly limited, and, and Justin could, you know, probably move forward with Phase One. About fifteen to twenty homes, um, but we still have issues with, uh, when we, when we discharge the, the backwash water from the pool and the water treatment plant. We can't do that at the same time.
This, this project...
Lift station is, is full.
So, so we're planning to start this, John, you said summer of two thousand and eighteen, right? So what would be our drop dead date, when we have to sell this easement issue?
By December.
Yeah. We plan on bidding in January.
I wonder if any of our developers know anybody at Casey's. You know, I think Casey's is a really challenging corporate citizen. I'm not even sure they're a chamber member. They're pretty challenging, yeah.
And then, so the one point three million for this trunk sewer, does that include cost recoveries from Oakland, correct? Is that what he was paying to upgrade the lift station, or I remember something discussed about that?
It didn't, it wasn't very much. Twenty-some thou- or four, I can't remember, twenty or forty thousand, but I, no, it doesn't take that credit into account. Um, that is simply the, the cost of the sewer portion of this project, um, so, including the lift station upgrade, but it doesn't take into consideration the credit we'll get back from Justin. Actually, none of our projects have done that, because it's such, usually such a small amount that comes in per year, it's hard to show much of a credit there. And, and it's just an estimate, anyway. But this project is a high priority, in our opinion.
Yeah, so do we want to, um, so we wanna look at the west side, the core reconstruction, the Rushmore, and the Bethany? And helping provide more money for the rehab, and include that in the sewer rates to see what it looks like? Is that what we wanna do, counsel, or what do you want, what do you wanna see next?
So if I heard you correctly, that would be one, two, three, six, and seven. Is that correct?
Right.
The force main to Sioux Falls does have to happen at some point, though, so keep that in mind. We'll leave that one off for now.
I don't know about the sewer update. I mean, I think that that's important, too, but I think, you know, we can't do everything, at least at, right now. I don't know.
I would say you wait with that. I mean, we've got, you've got a lot of the, we've got it identified in the report. It's just a matter of picking off the projects that are listed in there, so. So, one, two, three, six, and seven.
Tammy, are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that's what I would pick.
And when six to, just clarify, would six just go to Redwood, then? Is that what you guys are looking at?
I would think so.
And then when you do it, can you do it both ways, with us doubling up on those projects in those two core areas and then not?
Yeah, I can. So, okay, first of all, just, um, one, two, and three are already kind of on the books to happen next year. Okay? Um, so the next phases, which would be, um, the, you know, about half a million in the core part of town, we'll, we'll make that happen in bigger chunks, then. Is that what I'm hearing? So, or are you thinking even next year's project being consolidated with a much larger project? Okay.
One, one word of concern, if you want to, let's just say, include the rest of Main, Cardinal, and Robin in that, that's probably gonna delay our January bid date, which...
Yeah, 'cause we have to design a...
In any way, shape, or form at this point in time.
Yeah, thank you.
The question I've got is, uh, how much, how, uh, how many, how many phases do you want in the core part of town? Two, three, four, three?
Okay, three. Three, it looks like a three breaks off pretty easy.
There's stuff that we don't understand with the bricks that are underground. I mean, there might be a spot where it's really one and a half is the right number, or, you know what I mean? Like, take it to this spot. Like, I just picked a spot where it looked like a line in the sand, but, you know, it may be four, it may be, you know, I don't know. Tammy will be able to look at the map better and go from there, so, but sure, if we could do a compressed schedule, I think that would help us. Because, like I said, we're gonna get different bidding, we're gonna get different, I mean, and, and we can communicate that to the residents, that we're doing much-needed improvements. And, you know, we were talking about, you know, I think it was three hundred thousand or something like that for the Fourth Street repair, temporary. Well, if we're gonna get this done in three years, I mean, that's money we didn't spend at all. So, I mean, that's three hundred thousand we just saved, so.
Yeah, you were thinking that that, so that'd make it, that'd help on your re- the, the street portion, portion of those, recover costs, so.
So, so, John, I know that you have the software to do all of the rate stuff, right?
Yeah.
You've got all of that, okay?
Yep.
So it makes sense to me that you would do that, but for some of this other stuff, I think that we need to be careful, because, you know, we do have that whole vision out there of, of not awarding everything to Stockwell. So I think we have to be very careful with that, and I don't know how you guys are gonna work that out on all of this stuff. You have the information, but I just wanna make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for Stockwell's is doing everything without us talking about that.
Okay.
No offense.
We're just planning, just planning.
Well, I think that ties into, Barb, what we were talking about, Tammy being able to authorize to do things and go out and get bids, so to speak, and things like that, so I'm comfortable with that.
Let's see what it looks like. Let's see how bad it looks.
One thing to, one thing to be thinking about, if we're doubling up and being that aggressive about that core area, we can turn that back into gravel, but usually you don't pave the project until the very end. So if the contractor starts to get behind or anything, that might have to stay gravel road until that next spring. So, I think we should be very clear in upfront with residents during that time, which is usually better for the subbase, anyway, to let it go through a free-sta cycle and then pave it that next year.
I'm cringing, I'm just thinking. Just for verification, I've worked here for thirty-plus years. I have yet to see a contractor that'll start on one spot and work two streets at the same time. One reason is because you're not just replacing the sewer. We're gonna be replacing water, the sewer, there's storm sewer that's been already documented coming up off of Aspen Boulevard on these streets. So, nine times out of ten, and I'll use Southern Circle as an example, they came in, did all the storm sewer first, then they came back and tore the road up and did the storm, or the sewer. Then they came back and tore it up again and did the water. So, in order for a contractor to come in town and have them do two streets at the same time, that's gonna be a contractor beyond any of the likes I've seen in the last thirty years I've worked here.
It is, actually.
Unless you get two companies working together to do that project. But then again, let's just take an example of what this year was. Can you imagine the delays? If you start this project even in April, you're gonna be bothering the schools, because their main routes are coming up around that school so much. And you're gonna tear that street up from April till November. So, I, I realize it's gonna be a problem for them, too, but we actually, if you look on that map, the sewer actually goes all the way up to the school itself, which is gonna be a nightmare with all the kids working around here. So, I, I'm a, I'm a little leery of us trying to fight off too much at one time to start. You know, maybe once we get to Fourth Street, then take a bigger bite, because you can actually phase that in directions, too. Because right now, the way the sewer runs, everything runs to Cedar Avenue and then runs down to Fourth. So you could phase that a lot easier. It's just gonna be the difference in length.
And that's why we have you guys as professionals, because you know what you're doing. I think what you're hearing from us is, we wanna get it done as se- fast as we can, 'cause we're kinda tired of getting beat up about it, and it needs to be done. So however that needs to work, I, that's your guys' gig.
There are ways in the contract documents to let them know that they can only take, they can only rip up two blocks of street, and then they have to put it back to gravel before they rip up the next street. So when we're talking about accesses and whatnot, there are ways to kind of plan around that. But then it gets into the paving. We probably wouldn't pave till the end.
It takes long enough, I won't be on council anymore, so I won't have to hear the complaints.
I just think, uh, I, I, you know, I, I agree with Raleigh. Um, I do think there's the possibility of doing more than what we've been doing each year, though, so.
There is.
There's a, there can be a balance.
It's certainly doable, and, and I, I like blowing and going, you know, send them, do as much as you can, and just... What's gonna happen is this, in my opinion, if you limit the contractor to two blocks at a time, you're gonna pay for that significantly. 'Cause when they come in with a water crew, or a storm sewer crew, or sanitary sewer crew, they wanna go. They wanna rip up the street all at once when they've got their demo crew in. They wanna come in and tear everything out at once. They don't wanna bring that demo crew in three, four, or five times. Same thing with the pipe crew. Once they're laying water pipe, they wanna lay water pipe. They don't wanna stop at two blocks. It can be done, it can be phased, but you're gonna pay for it. So I don't think we're gonna see much of a cost savings in MOP charges versus stopping and starting with more than one crew. So, I don't think we're going to see much of a cost savings in MOP charges versus stopping and starting with more than one crew. And after you put the gravel down, you got to tear, take the gravel back up and reshape. So, it can all be done, and I don't have a problem with it. But please be aware, it's not going to be significant cost savings, number one, and in other communities I've been in, that's what we've done. We've done whole neighborhoods, not just a street, but whole neighborhoods. Very few complaints. Here, even with the way that we've done it, we receive a huge number of complaints with access, especially if we're going to interrupt a school. We're going to start before school is out. I'm just cautioning you. We will have concerns expressed, so...
I appreciate the explanation. I mean, that makes sense, and it doesn't sound very efficient to do a little chunk and then come back and do a little chunk and do a little chunk. So, I guess I would be more in favor of what, what Raleigh is seeing by doing it more strategically until we get to, like, Fourth. So, maybe we want to plan it out. How many years was it going to be for, like, Cardinal to Fourth? Was that going to be four or five years?
Yeah, you figure a block, a, a street a year, it's going to be, you know, four years to get there. And every projects I've ever been involved with, where you say, "We're going to limit you to two blocks and get all that done, and then you can go to the next two blocks," after the first phase, there's a sit-down between the contractor and the city, and they're saying, "We're not going to get it done, A. We need to get moving. We need to tear up more than what you're telling us we can," every single time. That's probably eight to ten projects.
So, then how do we do more than one street a year? That's, that's the, that's what I'm looking for.
Bite the bullet.
You do it. There's ways to do it. We'll come back with a plan.
And it's basically, uh, sitting down and telling those affected property owners, this is the way it's going to be. It's going to be inconvenient for a period of time. Uh, you're going to have to deal with it, but in the end product, a year or two after it's done, everybody thinks it's great, and nobody remembers the hassle.
Well, let's see what the difference is price-wise, if we're willing to take it, plus we're taking it.
Well, I, and I think when people see the progress, I think people are going to, and when we have a timeline, and we actually have that timeline, people are going to say, "Okay, you're going to be at my street this year." And they're going to see that progress, and they're going to probably back off a little bit. Also, I would err on, we'll see where the numbers come in at, but if you're going to bite this bullet, be careful on the budget the following year when that debt comes in, because budgets are going to be cut, stuff's going to be cut, because you're going to have a large debt. But we'll, we can see where the numbers come in, too, but I just want to err on those.
Okay, anything else, um, for the good of the cause, anybody? Okay, so what's our next meeting, like?
We've scheduled one for the twenty-sixth, but we can delay it, um, you know, maybe that second Monday, and, uh, second Monday in October is holiday, isn't it? Um, and maybe that second week in October, that Tuesday.
Yeah, we got to give it
Yeah, there's a lot of work that's going to take place between
I, I
The twenty-sixth is when you're going to do the interviews for mayor, too. Yep.
That's September.
No, no, do, do the, John can't make it on the twenty-sixth of, of September.
Yeah.
So, we'll still do the interviews, uh, maybe delay it until, well, let John take a look and see what his work schedule's like. Sometime in the first half of October.
I think we kind of know, we know what we're doing next year, so we just kind of need to start working on the following year. I think we have a, a good handle on what we're interested in. Do you feel that way?
I, I would just say, I, I've agreed and put, you know, Brian said, "Dana, I want to get stuff done, but I'd like to do it in an orderly fashion, not delayed based on complaints we're going to get from residents."
Just because you're a short timer.
I wouldn't care if I wasn't a short timer, Barb, I just, I think at a certain point, you just get to be, "I don't care. We're going to get it done, and yeah, it's going to be inconvenient to you, but live with it."
As long as we're, as long as we're all ready to field the phone calls and take some of the heat off of the city people. We are, I think. I think we are. We're tough, right? We're all tough, okay.
So, I guess to build off of the, kind of what Truck's saying there, so, once we get this plan, I think it's key that it's a plan that we stick to, so, um, you know, like, this year, we, we didn't do the Rushmore project, and we didn't do the Redwood Storm Sewer, and, and that was because of budget and things changed. Um, but what that does is then it pushes it out, so we need to be understanding that that's the plan, and, and things may come up where you might have a, an extra five percent or ten percent, but we're committed to these streets this year. Well, we got to make it work that year somehow. Uh, and I think that's the communication that's going to make it that much better for us, and the residents will understand it that much more when, when we're able to communicate it that way. Um, and then, um, you know, looking at, you know, the, the one comment that was made tonight is, is that capital plan of that five to ten years when it comes to all these projects, and then, you know, Christina mentioning, hey, you know, when we do start taking this debt load on, that's going to impact the budget, um, because now we've got payments. Um, you know, I think there's some homework that we should be doing before we make these decisions on that side. So, you know, whether it's Christina forecasts a number of, you know, hey, your, your payments are going to be a quarter million dollars a year. I, I think we need to know that ahead of time as well, um, so that we can start forecasting that. And then I had something else, but I forgot it, so we're going to go with that.
Um, I would like to add one thing. I know, uh, at the water meeting, we talked about a six-month reserve instead of a twelve-month reserve. Are we thinking the same thing for the sewer fund?
Okay. So, based on that comment, um, understanding how much reserve is available outside of that six-month would be a number that would help as well, Christina. So, like, right now, if we're negative or positive above that or below that six months, it'd be nice to kind of have a, a feel for that, because, not that I would want to spend that immediately, um... Just like in this case, the water and the sewer, um, you know, if we're sitting at, you know, in, in excess of that six months, then, you know, that's potential cash that we're saying we're willing to spend, uh, because we're, you know, our target is a six month. So, it, it, it's not something that has to happen tonight. Don't, I mean, I think we're all ready to be done for the night, but
I can tell you sewer is right around the six month. Um, next year's expenditures are two point three million. We're at a million right now in the sewer. Yeah.
Perfect. Very good. Yeah, just some, some stuff that'll help us, um, you know, when we're looking at it. And then, the other side of this is, um, you know, understanding the, the cost recovery side of it. Um, you know, an example of, of Oakland, I can't remember if that's eighty acres that he has, but eighty acres, uh, in Sioux Falls, that turns out to be four hundred thousand dollars in cost recoveries when it comes back, uh, because there's areas in Sioux Falls that they're doing five thousand dollars an acre. Um, you know, that's not something that we want to, uh, shy developers away from, but we need to understand if, um, you know, they're willing to help be a part of that. In Sioux Falls, they already are. Uh, especially on the east side of town, there's cost recoveries that are north of five thousand, uh, or right at five thousand dollars an acre. So, when you take an eighty-acre acre section times five thousand, that, that darn near half a million makes a big difference, especially when we're talking about, uh, that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, that we're looking at, uh, on the east side of town. Um, you know, I know that TB and J is looking at doing, you know, that eighty-acre section. Well, that covers almost half of that. Um, so, those are huge impacts when it talks to rates.
Uh, we already have, uh, fifteen hundred dollars on the sewer and water on the east side and on the west side. Uh, so, there's already those recoveries that are coming from the Bethany Lift Station on the east side and work we did with the booster station, so that's already, that gets imposed already, but this would be over and above that.
Yep.
I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to just make sure to encourage staff to give feedback to, or don't hesitate to remind us of stuff like cost recoveries, or don't forget what this is going to do to the budget. Because while you guys might sit there and, and have it constantly going through your head because you know it inside now, we, we, we don't. I almost always find it very enlightening when you guys chime in, or Raleigh, or any of the other staff as well, so it's very much appreciated and encouraged.
So, if you think we're crazy and you're going to start losing sleep at night, let us, let us know, because we, we do not want to put you in that position. Anything else, um, so then, John, when you're looking at that, then we need, we're going to have to make a determination what we're going to do with Fourth Street if we, if I change our strategy a little bit.
I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand, because we
If we, yeah. And so, maybe it's I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to decide then, yeah. Right. Okay, uh, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion by Clark, second by Parsons, to adj- adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are done.